Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, January 11th, 6:00 PM on the dot. The Town of Rutland Board of Selectmen meeting. I declare this meeting open. First, I entertain a motion to waive the reading of open meeting recordings.
Don't move, don't move.
Have a motion and a second. Motion was made by Mr. Stillings, second by Mr. Clark, Tamika.
It wasn't me, but I'd make the motion.
Oh, sorry, Jeff. I thought it was you.
It was, it was me, Mitch, Lyndon.
Oh, sorry. All right, Lyndon, second by Stillings. Okay, hearing no discussion, we'll have a roll call vote. Clark?
Aye.
Nichols?
Nichols, aye.
Whitman?
Whitman, aye.
Hillings?
Hillings, aye.
Resity, aye, motion carries unanimous. Next, we have minutes Treasury Warrant and Payroll. I will entertain a motion for the approval of Treasury Warrant 21-W14 and Payroll 21-PW14.
So moved.
Whitman, seconds.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call vote. Clark?
Aye.
Nichols?
Nichols, aye, excluding any COA wages.
Whitman?
Whitman, aye.
Hillings?
Hillings, aye.
Resity, aye, motion carries unanimous. Next, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of meeting minutes from December 28th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
For discussion.
Motion and a second. Further discussion, Jeff, go ahead.
Mitch, through the chair, and Tamika, I had one requested change to minutes regarding the milkroom conversation. I emailed it to both of you. The sentence says Jeff Stillings expressed concern that the former building inspector had given Kevin misinformation as a representative of the town. Requested that be clarified to Jeff Stillings expressed concern as Kevin had been in communication with the former building inspector throughout the process and had been proceeding with the guidance he was given.
Any further discussion?
And one other typo.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Agro- tourism, typographical spelling, agri, A-G-R-I, hyphen tourism.
Just to make those changes.
Thank you.
Clark and Nichols, are you, or I think it was both of you that made the motion. Are you amenable, Mr. Stillings?
As amended.
Clark?
Agree, agree.
Any further discussion? Okay, we'll have a roll call vote. Clark?
Aye.
Nichols?
Nichols, aye.
Whitman?
Whitman, aye.
Hillings?
Hillings, aye.
And Resity, nay, motion carries four ayes, one nay. Next, we have public comment. Is there anyone in the the meeting here for public comment? If you are, I would please ask that you use the Zoom raise hand tool. And Peter, who is running the meeting, can let you in. And once you're announced, please name an address. Do we have anyone with their hands raised, Peter?
No, sir, no hands.
Okay, I know the Zoom thing, the functionality is difficult for some folks, so we're willing to give you some leanings. You can't figure it out till we're further in the meeting. Again, please raise your hand and we'll do our best to accommodate you there. Next, on the agenda, we have the Town Administrator update. Ron, you're on mute.
Okay, good evening, everyone. First of all, the COVID issue, right now we're up to 87 cases, which is the highest point that we've had. Obviously, we're hitting, you know, the Christmas impact in terms of COVID cases. We expect that hopefully now things will start calming down a little bit. Not that people aren't grouped together in family situations and that these numbers will start coming down. Also, the fire department today, along with the health agent and everyone, we started doing the vaccine for area first responders. That started today at 12 o'clock and is going very well and all week long we'll be doing vaccinations. Hearing a lot of appreciation from area towns for Rutland's role and taking a leadership role in being able to get these vaccinations out to to everyone. So I think that's really worked really well. I think they're also doing nurses as well, a certain amount of nurses. So, you know, all reports of that are very positive so far. Right now, most of my time is being spent on putting together a budget. I feel really good about where I'm at. There are some obviously big numbers of the budget that we don't know yet. The school budget, which I'm sure is not going to come out until late February sometime, along with Bay Path. I think Bay Path is going to come out, beginning of the first week of February. Bay Path will be coming out. We're waiting on the healthcare numbers from Maya. So there's probably four or five items that we're really waiting on so that we can put together the final touches of the budget and eventually give it to the Finance Board and the Board of Selectmen. It's my expectation that I'll be asking the both boards, the Selectmen and the Finance Board maybe to meet jointly so that I can do a budget presentation to both of those boards at the same time. And I'll work it out with you, Mr. Chairman, with the Chairman of the Finance Board as well. But the budget right now, I've finished and completed meeting with all the individual departments. Again, with the exception of the Education Department. And I'm adapting all these salary lines and getting everything basically cleaned up and ready to go. Really like to start soon trying to build a business list in town, an email list of all the different businesses so that we can start having some type of contact between the town and the business community. I really looking to build up some kind of database. Haven't started that as of yet. Fran has told me to be happy to work with me on that. The Industrial Commission is still moving ahead on the Heist property. And we're working with the lawyer to start developing timing and getting the documents ready for closing on that property. I appreciate the work of the Industrial Commission of moving that forward. They're going to end up meeting more often and they're going to need the support to meet even more as they go through the process of all the land use planning that has to go through. I guess it's their parent board. So that is going to move forward in a positive way and I feel pretty good about that. Those are the main things that are going on right now. I just want to remind members that they do have to come in and sign any license approvals and we're going to have a few more of those tonight. So board members should do that. Again, if you have any questions or comments on any issue, please email me and I try to respond those as quickly as possible. I did, I got some emails today. I think it was from Jeff regarding the flag. Maybe one other Selectmen as well about the flags. So we were taking them down to half mast for the recent deaths. And also, one of the flags was in very poor condition. So Joe has already purchased the flag. I'm not sure if he got it up today, but I know he was working on getting that flag up. We feel very strongly that we want to make sure that our flags are in decent condition and they're flying at the appropriate level. You know, depending upon what events we're talking about. That as of right now, Mr. Chairman, is all I have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Nichols, you have a question?
Yeah, well, it's not really a question. I just want to bring up, I'm not sure if we're due to do the quarterly review on the Town Administrator. So that's something we may want to look at for an agenda item.
Okay, Ron, I guess I'll task you and Aaron to put something together for a future agenda, if not the next agenda, maybe the following.
I'd be happy to do that. Remember too, I mean, we really haven't established any goals and objectives either. So it's something we should start talking about. I mean, I kind of have my own goals and objectives I'm doing, but we should at least talk about some of the key issues and things you're looking for. So we'd be happy to start working on that and we'll set up a meeting to at least, I think we should have that quarterly meeting pretty quickly to kind of go over where we're at. And we should also, you know, do the second part, which is actually establishing more formalized goals and objectives.
Great. Okay. Under new business.
Well, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, can I, one more brief comment, I'm sorry. I sent you guys an email, but I really wanted you to hear it from me. Myself and the Chairman did attend the roundtable of the school district. And I wanted to just talk briefly about that because I think it really is important. All five of the communities involved in the the school district and I, I'm sorry, I have to apologize. Karen was also a part of that meeting from the Finance Committee, but all five towns made it very clear that this is a tough fiscal year. And they were looking for the school committee to be very responsive in terms of being conservative with that budget to make sure that the towns could, you know, meet the needs of the school system. I think everyone is very clear that they're extremely supportive of education. They're looking for great quality education for their children. But at the same time, budgets are tough and it was nice, I had had some previous conversation with different town managers, town administrators about this. It was nice to see all of them on the same page in terms of their message to the school committee. You know, the Chair of the School Committee was on the meeting. I guess there was another number of other school committees, the administration. I think myself and particularly the Chairman made a lot of relevant comments about what we thought. I hope that they listened and I'm looking forward, hopefully, to a positive response from the school committee. These schools are, tonight, one of the discussions they're having about whether if they open on the 19th or not. You remember they, they had that where the the issue was that their plan was to open the 19th. Health Boards and Health Agents were invited to attend the school board meeting tonight. None of the Health Boards or Health Agents told them if they should open or close or what they should do, or they really left it to the school administration to make that decision. We gave the viewpoints of where we are currently as it relates to COVID. So I think tonight is going to be a big night. I think there's a lot of parents out there looking to find out when the schools are going to open. And from what the Superintendent said, as of now, the plan is to open unless the school committee votes tonight to not open. So I will say that I think it's extremely tough decision for the school superintendent to make, you know. The numbers are going higher, but also the schools are more prepared than ever. They have all the equipment, the PPP in place and the shields and all the protections they need are also in place. So I think they're in better position than ever before to open, but the numbers are still on the high side, so that is a concern. So be interested to see what the school committee does tonight.
I don't believe that's on the agenda, Ron, for tonight's school committee meeting. The reopening plan is not on the agenda for the meeting tonight, so I'm not sure that you sent that they're going to be discussing it.
Not sure I heard you, but okay.
It's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda?
No.
So is that, well, I guess they could add it to the agenda. I don't know if they're gonna if it's not on the agenda, does that mean it automatically opens on the 19th? I don't know. One would think that you could add it to the agenda, but if it's not on the agenda, they would have to have a motion to add, so it could be, we'll see. Did we lose the Chairman? Oh, there he is.
Sorry, dog, dog barked. All right, thank you for that update. And obviously, we look forward to working with the school. I will say that all of the towns, I think, expressed very similar concerns because of the nature of this year. I am a little bit disappointed that we had some questions regarding the general direction of the budget concerning expenses and staffing that were really, I guess, based that were not able to be answered. And I look forward to working with both the school committee and the district, obviously, and getting those things addressed. All right, on to new business. We have a poll hearing. We have a correspondence from our DPW Director. I guess first I have to declare the poll hearing open. So we have now entered into the poll hearing. Ron, we don't need a motion for that. We can just open it.
Yeah, we can open a motion. The poll is going to be installed at Prescott Street. National Grid is going to install one SO poll. The response in DPW is DPW is okay with it. I got a letter from our DPW Directors. There seems to be no concerns about this. And the DPW Director is on the call in case anyone has any questions.
I mean, if everyone's okay, this is, this is pretty standard. I know Joe has worked a lot of these now. His recommendation to this is the same recommendation we always make is that we simply ask that the poll be installed. It's currently staked approximately three feet from the edge of the travel road. The distance from the edge of the travel road provides for snow storage during plow events. And if Joe's okay with it, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the placement of the poll. Or do we have to close the hearing? I believe that's close the hearing first, right, Ron, is that?
Yeah, we have, anybody has any?
Does anybody have any questions about the poll as it's being proposed?
No.
Just have a question about the specifics of the poll, if you don't mind, Mitch.
Sure, go ahead.
Is this for to accommodate additional new construction housing or is this to upgrade, an upgraded service or a little bit of both?
Hi, I can speak on that. I'm from National Grid. The poll is to bring, it's an upgrade, it's existing residential house. I believe it's 40 plus foot. And it is just to bring up to our current standards. The span of secondary to the house was too long. And in the event of an ice storm or something like that, it could cause it to sag and then a truck could come and clip it. Just to avoid any incidents like that.
Thank you. I appreciate all the work you guys have been doing and mindful of the ice storm and everything, the storms. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so at this point, if there are no other questions, I will close the hearing. And we'll entertain a motion to approve the placement as the poll, of the poll as
Mitch, I apologize for interrupting. We do need a motion to close the hearing.
Yeah, that's what we need. I'll make a motion to close the hearing by a second.
Second.
All right, motion second, let's have a roll call vote. There's no further discussion. Seeing none, Clark?
Aye.
Nichols?
Nichols, aye.
Whitman?
Whitman, aye.
Hillings?
Hillings, aye.
Resity, aye, motion carries unanimous. Hearing is closed. I'll make a motion to place the poll as indicated in our materials this evening with the approval of our DPW Director.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board? All right, hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Clark?
Aye.
Nichols?
Nichols, aye.
Whitman?
Whitman, aye.
Hillings? And Resity, aye, motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Reynolds, for attending and thank you, Joe, for reviewing everything. Next on the agenda, we have a joint discussion with the Board of Assessors. See several folks in the meeting. Thank you for coming out. We are under an obligation to select a new Chair for the Board of Assessors. I believe that's an elected position until that gets elected. So we're going to jointly appoint a replacement. We're going to take, you know, recommendations from the BOA is my understanding, and then the Select Board can choose to vote yea or nay on that. In the town election, to which a vacant seat will be placed would be scheduled for tentatively right now, the 10th of May this year. So that being said, I see Mr. Gibbs. You are on the call. If there's anyone else, I apologize, I can't see you.
Robin Turani is on the call as well.
There you are, Robin. Hello.
So, do you appoint the Chairman or does the Board of Assessors?
What do assessors do?
I think he misspoke with just, yeah, just appointing the replacement and then you guys would vote on a chair, I believe.
I'm sorry, yes.
Yep, correct. So I know, and I don't see him, but Arthur Lincoln, who was once on the the board a number of years ago, he was on the board for, I don't know, five years or so. He said he'd be willing to fill the spot at least until May and see how it goes after that, but he's willing to fill in in the interim.
Okay. Is that a recommendation from the board?
It's my, it's my recommendation, yes.
Okay, is, does the board have any questions for the Board of Assessors?
I have a question, and maybe this, if I may, Mitch. Maybe it doesn't pertain to this, but I don't see a letter of interest or anything in our documentation. It sounds like the candidate, Arthur, Mr. Arthur Lincoln has been in touch with the BOA and obviously they have a previous history there, but just for our own sake, I would moving forward, appreciate having like the letter of interest or whatever. Like I said, I know that this is a little bit of a a different situation than some, but in the past, we've asked for that, so.
If we, and really I'll leave it up to the board. We have the recommendation from the BOA and it's clear there's been a conversation that's been had. If the board, however, would like to wait for an official email from the individual, the board can so choose to do that. Willing to entertain a motion either to appoint or to hold to a point for the next meeting, which would be on the 25th.
Through the chair?
Jeff, go ahead.
Can we make, can we make the motion to appoint upon receipt of his letter of interest? Make sure he concurs.
I believe that would be a fair motion if the board is so moved.
Skip today, skip that discussion.
Yes, I do. Through the chair, this is an elected position, so they shouldn't have to send anything to the Board of Selectmen. They just need to come on their own to tell us what they would like to do. This is not a committee or a or a board of ours. It's an independent board of their own. So I don't see where they need to send us any letters or anything. They're coming with their recommendation and that should suffice.
I would, I would, look, I think this is similar to, and I think Leah, maybe we're on the same wavelength here because I think this is probably what you were going to say as well, correct me if I'm wrong, but we just went through this process with the school committee. And because we had so much interest, we did field letters, we interviewed candidates. And again, if that's something the board wants to do for this position, you know, I'm more than happy to do that. It sounds like, you know, we're leaning on the BOA because of the nature of the work to provide a recommendation. I'm not sure, Mr. Gibbs, if you fielded any other interest for the position. I know there's a lot of work involved on that board. But I think that's, we're following precedent in how we've handled it with the prior school committee appointments. Ron, were you gonna?
Yeah, I'm actually thinking about the wording of it and I do remember kind of saying that the first part of it is a recommendation from the Board of Assessors and then if the Board of Assessors doesn't give a recommendation, then the Selectmen could appoint somebody, but it does say that I, frankly, I'm wondering if that was the same wording for the school committee. I don't remember that wording for that, but I do remember that discussion for the Board of Assessment. I don't know if they're different or not, but I think frankly, I think it's, it could be done either way. I think I would agree with Leah that it's nicer that people show interest by sending a letter, but you know, if the gentleman's willing to serve and the Board of Assessors has experience with them, you know. I don't, I don't think there's any other names out there that are looking for this position. Nobody else has applied and my office didn't even get the one that the Board of Assessors has, so I don't, I'm not sure, unlike the school committee, I'm not sure this is a board that people are knocking down the door to serve on.
No, and I think we only are going with the appointment of Arthur because he's been on the board before and he was the only person that stepped forward to say that he would just fill in until we found a replacement, you know, in the town election. I had sent an email to the Board of Assessors stating that he was willing to volunteer. He's, I'm not sure how much he uses the computer and things, so but we can try to get a letter from him.
This is Leah, sorry, Mitch.
Go ahead.
I mean, I, in this case, I would be okay appointing. I don't want to, I know the assessors are currently operating as a two-member board and really need a third member. I just kind of want the documentation and the precedent that ideally we would really like to have the letters of interest. In cases like this, if it's, it's a recommendation from the Board of Appeals or the Board of Assessors, then that's fine. I just kind of wanted to put it out there that ideally I would like to have the letter, but knowing the time constraint, the time constraints in the sense of they're a two-member board currently, so.
Because we're trying to keep the precedent and we, you know, we've had these conversations where we need to be better about these things. It sounds like Mr. Gibbs had done with due diligence. He has a record that he had sent to the BOA. Mr. Stillings and Ms. Whitman, would it be acceptable then if Mr. Gibbs, if we appointed Gibbs forwarded that message through the Board of Selectmen in lieu of interest from our, given his unfamiliarity with the computer or whatever it was, stating that there was a conversation, there's been expressed interest?
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
That works for me.
Yeah, I have a record and we've maintained our due diligence, so. Any further discussion from the board? Mr. Stillings, were you going to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Arthur Lincoln to the Board of Assessors for the request and the recommendation of Mr. Gibbs and Ms. Turani.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Clark?
Aye.
Nichols?
Nichols, aye.
Whitman?
Whitman, aye.
Hillings?
Hillings, aye.
Resity, aye, motion carries unanimous. And Mr. Gibbs, if you could just forward that email to the Town Administrator or the Board of Selectmen's inbox, we'll just have it on file.
Yeah, she, she has it. Aaron has it.
Oh, okay. All right, great.
Just one question. So are you notifying him or should we notify him? And does he go up to the Town Hall to get sworn in? How's the procedure?
He would, I believe our office can notify him and then he would have to make an appointment with the Town Clerk to go and get sworn in for the remainder of the term.
I would just ask Mr. Chairman, did he send me his name and contact information? Because they have none of that. And we'd be happy to send a letter. So Jeff, just send me the basic information about him. We'll send him out a letter. And then yes, he's going to make time to come into the Town Clerk's office to be sworn.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Certainly appreciate it. Okay, next on the agenda, we have the Moses Howe Award. This actually last, Mr. Nichols?
Yeah, I just want to recuse myself as involves a family member, but I do want to say thank you to the nominees as well as those that nominated people. And that's it.
I would think, and it's totally up to your discretion, Mr. Nichols, that you would be able to weigh in or vote on any member nominated with the exclusion of your family member. Unless you, of course, wish to vote against that member, which no one here is going to judge, so.
Yeah, I just feel it would be inappropriate either way, voting for or against, so.
Understood. All right, what I, Mr. Stillings, go ahead. And I think I have a way that you could probably run this.
I was just going to say the same thing you said, Mitch, to Lyndon. Feel free to chime in on all the other, we the public probably not aware, but we had a multitude of nominations, which I think is awesome for the second year out in there. So I do appreciate all the nominees. And they're all great nominations. And I was just going to opine to Lyndon to please feel free to voice his concerns for any of the other nominees as quite a few.
So I think what, I can just pull this up here. What I would like to do, because I know how we began a list that Aaron had sent out. Apologies, give me one second here. Because we are going to vote on one of these individuals, I think it behooves us to every single one that was nominated to recognize their public service. So if you don't mind, I'm just going to read the individuals that were nominated. We had, I believe, three individuals with multiple nominations, so I can delineate those as well. The first nomination, these are in no particular order. These are just the orders in which they were compiled. Officer Mike Grover. So I'd like to recognize her for her service. Second nominee, one individual that received multiple nominations was Ms. Sheila Dibb. Obviously a longtime Board of Selectmen member. Let's see, scrolling down the list here, another nominee, Sergeant Diane Hertzig. Another member of our police department. Thank her for her service. We had another individual with multiple nominations posthumously. Detective John Sanji. So wish to thank the family. Another nominee with multiple nominations was Director Nancy Nichols. Like to recognize her for her public service. And another nominee that was received was Christopher Kalovski. And I believe that would be. And I believe that would be, yeah. So that said, um, you know, I'd open up the, uh, the floor for discourse if, if any of the Board of Selectmen I would like to weigh in with any conversation. I think all of these individuals have, have served the town, um, during probably one of our most trying years. Uh, so they certainly recognize or deserve that recognition. Mr. Stillings?
Um, thanks for reading that off, Mr. Chair. I was one of the nominees for Detective John Sanji, so I would happily recuse myself from that particular vote in there. But, uh, recognizing that, uh, this is voting on something of, uh, public safety significance for the year 2020. And, um, other concerns regarding the COVID, which is still going on, will probably be concluded in 2021. And that would be an ideal opportunity to recognize somebody for the conclusion in 2021. But in 2020, uh, certainly of significance, great magnitude was the loss of one of our own officers from this worldwide pandemic. And that's what, uh, really resonated and brought the COVID-19 home to, so that one of our own was stricken ill and did not recover from that. So, uh, that was my reason, I, I like to say was, should be an obvious nominee. Uh, but for 2020, uh, John Sanji should have discussion, uh, to have him recognized. Keeping in mind that the Moses Howe Award is displayed at Public Safety, at the Public Safety Building. It is a, um, an annual award with the brass plaques continuing from year to year. And, uh, 2020 is absolutely and always will be synonymous with the COVID-19 in there. And that's the story to tell for, uh, the history, the history to follow, so. The others are excellent, excellent nominations and, um, I, I think there's everyone over here. So that's all I have to say, thank you.
Understood. And I think, uh, to your point, you have to build off of that. Um, given how many of our police officers were nominated, um, I think we certainly have to give kudos to Chief Monaco and that whole department for the way they've conducted themselves. I think good leadership starts at the top and, uh, that's certainly reflected in the way the public is viewing our, our police department. So, that being said, uh, does anyone else on the board, uh, anyone else like to weigh in? Any of the nominees?
I may, and this might be a better question for Jeff, but I'm not sure. Um, I know in the past, Jeff, this, um, it says, I was just looking at the nomination form. It says for public service and excellence, and it seems like, um, it was just a, a, a little bit of a push for, um, public safety, law enforcement especially, that's fine if that's the intent of the, the award. I just wasn't sure.
You're correctly, it's public service. I said, uh, public safety.
Okay.
It's a slip, but it's public service to the, to the community.
Yeah, I mean, I think all of these individuals are huge, a huge asset to the town. And so, um, I mean, it's hard to choose one, I think, is in this, in this case. Um, they've all done a lot for a lot of our town and not just one population of our town, which I think is important. Um, that it's holistically, they've helped, um, touch, they've probably touched the lives of almost every individual person in this town in some way, shape or form, um, throughout all of their service. So, um, it's tough to pick one, I think, for me.
Yeah, I think, uh, that's a great point, Leah. We have had multiple nominees with, with multiple nominations. Um, and I think, you know, to Jeff's point, in, in full disclosure, I mean, I was one of the, the folks that nominated, um, Director Nichols because of the way she's worked with the senior community during this pandemic. Um, you know, I know we've recognized her staff before for the Mills on Wheels program and she's got her. But, uh, oh, and her, apologies.
Andrew, we gave her a key.
That's, absolutely. But I think, to Jeff's point, this is a, a public safety award, but, um.
The public service.
I'm sorry, public service award, but it is, it is difficult, uh, really in my mind, um, you know, I would lean towards, uh, Detective Sanji, uh, simply because he, he made that sacrifice, serving the town. And, uh, it's one of those things that, um, I don't think a community ever wants to go through. But, uh, the resilience the community showed around that was, was truly something special. Um, so if there's no other discussion from the board.
So through the, through the chair?
Mr. Clark, go ahead.
Can I nominate Officer Sanji, Sanji for the award, please?
I have a motion, do I have a second?
In one second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? And again, I just wanna add that this vote, uh, we're not voting against anyone. I think every single person nominated here is deserving of it. Um, and I, that's why I wanted to read the nominations, uh, so, um, if there's no further discussion, we'll have a roll call vote. Uh, Stillings?
Stillings, aye.
Um, Clark?
Aye.
Uh, Nichols had recused, so Whitman?
Whitman, aye.
And Recity, I, uh, motion carries four yeas and one recusal. Um, so thank you all, um, for your public service and, uh, it's, it's a tough year, so.
Thanks for putting that on the agenda.
Absolutely. The, uh, next on the agenda, we have, um, license renewals. So we have three that are up for renewal. Uh, Anthony's Auto, Lads, which is your common vic and liquor license, and the Milk Room. Um, Ron, did you wanna take the lead on this item? Oh, sorry, Ron, you're on mute.
Sorry, the dog was barking, so I shut it down. Um, so all of these three have met all the requirements, requirements for the licensing. We also provided you a letter with some companies that are not renewing and stuff, uh, just for your information. Uh, so all three have gone through the entire process and meet the requirements. You will see in your package that we did two separate licenses for the Milk Room. We are recommending it in, in two ways and leaving it to the Board of Selectmen to decide how they wanna move forward with it. The request obviously was for outdoor, uh, service and people be able to be drinking on the outdoors. Uh, we are comfortable with that. We made it clear that we can't do anything any inside until such time as the building requirements are all complete. The first, uh, license basically deals with just onboarding. The applicant has requested also, uh, to be able to eventually serve on the deck. Uh, you'll see that the only wording difference is in the, uh, option two. It says excluding the deck area until approved by the building inspector. So we wanna make it just clear that, uh, you know, the Board of Selectmen determine if they just do the first one and say outside, uh, if he gets the deck approved, he would have to come back and get a secondary approval. The second, uh, license, it says, you know, excluding the deck until it meets the requirements would allow him to complete the deck, have our building inspector, uh, sign off on the final approval of the deck. And then once he does that, he'll be able to serve. So it's the board option as to how they would like to deal with that. Uh, we're comfortable either way. Uh, he has submitted some, uh, building inspector asked him to do sort of just a kind of written draft and a sketch of the areas that he uh, would be serving alcohol in and where, uh, patrons would be drinking the alcohol outside. Uh, he's met that requirement and we're comfortable, well, it's not, obviously it's not engineering work. It does pretty clearly outline, you know, where people are gonna serve and, and lighting and, and, um, where customers are gonna sit, so, um, we'll leave it up to the board as to which way you wanna adopt the first license or the second one.
All right, I think, um, if it's okay with everyone, Jeff, I know you have your hand up. But, um, if I can make a suggestion, uh, because of the, the complications with the Milk Room, with those, maybe we could take Anthony's Auto and Lads first and then have that discussion. Ron, do you feel like that's appropriate?
Yeah, that's fine, you can just put it up any way you'd like to do it.
Is, is the board amenable to, um, I'll entertain a motion for Anthony's Auto and Lads if we can take them as a slate? And then we can have the, how we wanna proceed with the, um, Milk Room licensure.
So moved, second.
A motion and a second, can you further discussion about Anthony's Autos or Lads?
Where's Anthony's Autos? Where is it? Anybody know? Never heard of it.
I, oh, if I meant, I thought was this, um, I think that this was the one down beside Countryside. Across from Schultz Farm.
It appears that we do not have the, uh.
It said, sorry, it says on the license, on the license, it says 116, 166 Maple Ave.
Okay, there we go, yep.
166.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Excuse me, Stillings?
Stillings, aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Nichols?
Nichols, aye.
Whitman?
Whitman, aye.
Recity, I, motion carries unanimous. Um, next we have a decision to make on the Milk Room and just to reiterate, Ron, a decision is whether or not to grant a license for outdoor. And then, uh, that would exclude the deck, but once the deck is, uh, fully permitted, um, and okayed, uh, the Milk Room would come back for that additional licensure to allow operations on the deck. Whereas the secondary option would be to, uh, approve the license uh, for both the outdoor area and the deck pending deck approval. Meaning that no operations could take place on the deck until that was signed off on. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Um, I'll bring it up, Mr. Stillings, you had your hand up?
I was gonna ask if the, uh, town administrator had a proposed motion, but after you clarified that, uh, Mitch, I, I do like that second option, I think that's reasonable on everyone's part.
I, I, I will say this, Mr. Chairman, uh, the owner knows clearly that if he does any operations on the deck, he will, he could potentially lose the license as a whole, so I think that's understood, that's a safety matter and it would also cause fines. So he, he's well aware of the situation and, uh, you know, obviously our building inspector will be following up on it, but I think he understands, you know, what's going on here.
Mr. Nichols, you had your hand up?
That, that actually was my question, if Mr. Jarvie was amenable to either option, so. I clarified that.
I think, I think he would prefer the secondary option because then he doesn't have to come back. Uh, so it makes it a little easier for him to go to secondary option. And again, you know, we're not gonna allow him to, you know, do anything on the deck until such time as it proves anyway, but again, that's up to the board.
Okay. So I make a motion for approval, um, pending, um, approval from the building inspector on the deck.
So that was the secondary description?
To clarify that motion, Mr. Nichols and your second, Mr. Clark, would be to go with the second option, which would be to allow for outdoor, um, and the deck, uh, I'm sorry, excluding the deck until it is properly.
Right.
Okay.
Right, second option is.
All right, I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Stillings?
Aye. Stillings, aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Nichols?
Nichols, aye.
Okay.
Whitman, aye.
Recity, I, motion carries unanimous. Thank you. Um, next on the, uh, agenda is the Wachusett Greenways. We have a request for fiscal year 22 support. And, uh, okay. And, okay, apologies, um, that request is included in the packet. I know this has come before the board in prior years. So at this point, I don't know, uh, Ron, if you wanna give us a brief kind of overview?
Yeah, and you know, my understanding of this, and we provided you a bunch of information on this. Obviously, you have the letter from Colleen, uh, the, the Wachusett Greenway, uh, asking for this request. As you're correct, Mr. Chairman, uh, this money has been asked for in numerous years. There had been occasions where it's been approved at town meeting, pretty much unanimously. There doesn't seem to be a lot of controversy in terms of the approving at town meeting. I don't know quite what happened last year, uh, Colleen had thought it was approved. In fact, the town administrator at the time, uh, requested the, uh, DPW director to fund uh, her request through a line item in the DPW director's, uh, budget. So frankly, I wanted to bring this before you, that if the board in fact wants to do this, they have no problem with us adding it to the overall budget. But I don't think it should come out of the DPW's budget unless the board specifically creates a line item within that budget for this purpose. That's fine. I just wanted, before I add this to the budget, because of the nature of this, I wanted the Board of Selectmen to tell me what they wanna do. Either they wanna include funding for this and they see it as a priority, or they don't. Um, I think, you know, from what I'm told, and again, I'm sure Colleen's on this call, is that all the other towns are providing some funding to this. Uh, this organization gets benefits in a couple of ways. One is that, uh, the Greenways applies for conservation grants for trail improvement, uh, directly to the state. And all the towns have agreed to not to apply for money so that she's not in competition with all the towns to do this. So they could kind of get, uh, the advantage of, of applying for money, and I think they've done pretty well before the state. Uh, but in spite of that, the organization needs more support. I think this is recognized as a benefit to the town, uh, both for the purpose of, you know, citizens who use the trail, but potentially also for some tourism or attracting people into the town. Um, it's about a thousand dollars, it's not, we're not talking a lot of money here. Uh, and I really, again, I'm, I think I'm just looking for direction from the board, if they support this or not support this, so I can decide to put it into the budget.
Okay, Mr. Nichols, you had your hand raised?
Uh, yeah, I, I just didn't know if the Finance Committee had made any recommendation or had reviewed it because I would recommend holding off until we hear, um, you know, what their opinion is regarding it.
I don't believe that they had, uh, like, a member of Finance Committee on the, the call. Ron, did you have a response?
I was just gonna say, this has not gotten to the point, at least for this budget year, to get to the Finance Committee. So if I put it into the budget, if the Board of Selectmen likes the concept of this, I'll put it in the budget. And the Finance Board can reject it if it chooses to in the budget. Uh, but that would be the, the process that we're gonna put it in this budget so everybody can see, uh, where the money is and the Finance Board can decide to or not to recommend it to town meeting.
So, uh, so I would further recommend that the Finance Committee discuss it with you and they decide whether it's gonna be put in the budget and then we would make a recommendation on whether we support it. But I, if, if it's gonna be a budget item, I think it should be going through the Finance Committee first.
But just, just to be clear, to, in, not being, but it's, first, the, the normal process is, is that the town administrator first adopts the, but, you know, presents a budget and presents a full budget to the Finance Committee, uh, for the recommendation. So I think it, the first test is if I wanna put it in or not, um, is the first recommendation, so when I recommend a budget to them. So I can do that, I can make that decision and send it to them and they can decide.
I guess, I, I mean, I, I, I understand that, Ron, but, uh, but we're not gonna go over every line item in the budget either before you present it to them. So in my opinion, it should be discussed with the Finance Committee prior to us making any kind of recommendation. That's just my opinion.
No, and, and that's fine, I was just, I, that's what I said. I knew there was some controversy about this or some different issues, that's kinda why I brought it forward. I just don't wanna, you know, open up to be some kind of controversy, you know?
I think the issue is that, uh, we received an invoice for work already had, that had been completed. And this had not gone through, it sounds like at least maybe last year, um, when you're spending tax money or you're taking money out of Joe's budget, this really needs to go to town meeting for the citizens to be aware of it. And I think that's, Mr. Nichols, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's kind of what you're alluding to. So, Mr. Clark, I see you have your hand up and then Leah, um, after Mr. Clark, please, and then Jeff, if you could follow, if you could follow, Leah.
So through the chair, I, I personally do not wanna see us take any money out of our town coffers to pay for the rail trail. If we have extra money, that's fine, but we do not have extra money to give away to anybody else at this time. So I would say, no, we don't give it to them.
Leah, go ahead.
Thanks. I was gonna say, I was under the impression that in the past, um, previous to last year, the past couple of years at least, I remember it being a, an article at town meeting to appropriate, to raise and appropriate the funds for this, being its own budget item. So I'm in favor of keeping it in the budget and having that discussion through FinCom and potentially us and then bringing it to town meeting and let, um, the, the townspeople decide. I know, I had asked Ron if, um, Wachusett Greenways could offer any insight into the usage this past year with COVID and everything. Um, and I just know from the Town Center Study Group and stuff, we're always looking at, we've been looking at ways to brainstorm, um, tapping into the rail trail visitors and coordinating them, connecting them with some of our local businesses. Tapping into the rail trail visitors and coordinating them, connecting them with some of our local businesses and everything, if these are people that are coming to town. As kind of the agro tourism, day trippers, whatever, um, so I think that it's. A valuable asset to the town, and that it's up, it should be up to, it should, it warrants additional discussion.
I was just gonna, uh, say that my understanding or recollection from the annual town meeting. On this was that the finance committees, uh, presented the balanced budget, but it didn't include. The one thousand dollars requested from, uh, Wachusett Greenways, and the, uh, floor. Uh, approved it, so we had to find a thousand dollars from somewhere, and. And just for clarification, it never came before the board to take a thousand dollars from the DPW to fund Wachusett. Greenways, that would have been the call of the former town administrator to be able to pay that, but the reason, uh. That bill came in is because it was voted for at town meeting through, uh. An article that wasn't necessarily budgeted for, so. In preparation or, or future planning, maybe we could plan for that anticipation that it will be. Uh, almost unanimously voted in that town meeting in there, and, uh, by no means should we. Have to take that from the DPW's coffers.
I think, I think the, the consensus, um. Seems to be, I don't think we need a motion on this, but because it's a regular course of public business. And, you know, if you want a motion, Ron, I guess we can do it, but my, my opinion is, you know, personally, I don't wanna be taking money from other departments, um. During, given our, our current funding situation, everyone's already stretched tight, I know that you have, uh. Uh, department heads level funding from last year, um, there's a lot of cuts that are gonna be made in terms of needed equipment. So I think that this is a conversation to Lincoln's point, that we need to have during our joint meeting with FinCom to prioritize. What we really should be funding this year or not, but if everyone's okay with it, and if Ron, if you want a motion, we can have a motion.
No, I, I, I don't need a motion, I may have the ability to put it on, I just wanted to get a sense of the board on this one, cuz I knew there was history on it. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna frankly put it into the budget somewhere, I'm gonna disclose it, make sure it's clear to FinCom. That's coming, and then the boards can take, make decisions if they wanna cut it or not. I wanna make sure that, at least, I want it to be public, so the public knows what's going on, I do not want it to be in the DPW budget, so. Uh, if people wanna strike it down and do that, that's fine with me, but I think at least it should be a public discussion. FinCom could strike it, and I recommend it, if that's their judgment, that's fine.
Mr. Nichols?
Right, and I, yeah, I just wanted to clarify, even if we vote on it, it's only just as support, the, the final decision comes. With the fin, finance committee, as they, they're the ones that do the budget, so do with approval on it, so that's. That's why I'd want recommendations, and not knowing what's going on with all the line items, I don't feel comfortable with making any kind of a recommendation.
That's very fair, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I think, um, that we don't need a motion, and this will go to FinCom, and my, my intent, my goal. Is to get back into the practice of, like we did with special, uh, meeting with FinCom, to go through everything with them, to make sure that, um. We're all on the same page, uh, and we can be, uh, organized for town meeting, so. Next. Item seventy-eight, uh, the item is just called marijuana. So Ron, uh, I know that you had gone through, uh, we had RFP process originally that had failed. We had a secondary RFP process, and you had a eternal, internal review evaluation team that met. Wanna give us a, a brief, broad overview of that process?
Yeah, so in the request for information, we sent out to the general public, it was posted, so anyone who was interested in. Uh, giving us a proposal for retail marijuana establishment, retail establishment, uh, good. Look at that request for information, uh, and make a decision if they wanted to move forward or not. Question for information, a very detailed questions and evaluation criteria. That any applicant would have to meet in order to get, uh, approved for a license, or be chosen for a license. Right, Mr. Chairman, the team insisted of myself, the police chief, the fire chief, the town planner, the health agent, DPW director. Uh, all of those people, uh, were giving, uh, I created an evaluation sheet, that I've given to all the board members to review. The evaluation sheet meets exactly as the request for information was developed, and these were the things that the applicant would have to do. Each of the evaluation team members were given to it, and asked to, uh, evaluate that on the scores that were listed in the RFI. There were two companies who applied, Hi-Hawk Farm LLC, Mass Home Growers were the two companies. Now. One of the things the RFI does is it says, you have to turn in the documents by a certain timeframe in order to be considered. Uh, Hi-Hawk Farm did in fact turn in all the required documents that were requested in the request for information. Mass Home Growers, uh, provided electronic version of the document, but did not provide all the copies and stuff they wanted to do.
If I may, if I may, we submitted an RFI. If I may from the chair, you're telling us we did not submit an RFI, but we did.
Mr. Chairman, may I finish with?
Mr. Moore, I'll give you a moment to speak. Thank you.
So, so we decided, if, after looking at, uh, we decided not to disqualify on the basis of that technical reason. Uh, because we wanted to make sure that both proposals got a fair evaluation based upon the merits of the proposal itself.
Uh, Ron, just to stop you there and ask a question. Cause you are a certified procurement officer.
I, I am, yes.
Is, is that? That action within your discretion to make that decision?
It is, and in the, in the evaluation team's discussion, because of the way you set it up. The evaluation team can make a recommendation, but as a certified procurement officer for the state of Massachusetts. It falls on me to make the final decision, of course, the way I look at it, the reason for an evaluation team is to have all individual representation and scoring, so. I don't think I've ever gone through this process and not selected who the evaluation team is, but you, you're correct. And a big issue here is that we have to follow, regardless of who we like, or what we like, or we know somebody, we have to follow the law, and that's, that's what we did in this case. So both, the decision was not to disqualify, uh, the proposal, uh, for technical reasons. We did evaluate this, every individual member of the evaluation team, uh, scored both of these proposals. Uh, you can see the scores on the proposal sheet that we provided, uh, to all of you. Uh, I wanna thank, uh, both of the proposers for submitting this documentation, it's quite frankly, a ton of work. To put together these packages, and, and both of them, I think worked very hard in getting that information, uh, to us. Uh, the, all of the, the evaluation team members, uh, chose Hi-Hawk Farm LLC as their preferred. Proposer, in this particular case, you'll see from the evaluations, or that it was two hundred and sixty-three point oh three, and of course, that's an average of everybody. For Hi-Hawk Farm LLC, and one ninety-five sixty-seven for Mass Home Growers. Now, I, I do wanna be clear, uh, that this process is designed by the state of Massachusetts to be fair and equal to everybody. And I wanna stress again that we can't give some kind of preference to an individual, regardless if they live in the community or not. I, I appreciate it, and frankly, I think we'd all love to give it to somebody who lives in the community, but that's just not the way the law works. The law is that you have to, you know, basically, uh. Give the proposal that scores the best from the criteria you establish, so that's what we did, so you'll see that I'm recommending. A motion for the, uh, board of selectmen to recommend that we, uh, go into a host, uh, agreements with. The preferred vendor in this case, which is Hi-Hawk Farm.
Thank you. We have a couple people, uh, that would like to speak, and, uh, to respect them for attending. Uh, and willing to allow them to do that, however, I ask that you please make your comments brief and, uh, be respectful. So, if you're here to speak, please, raise your hand, um, I, I do see, uh, I'm sorry, is it Saskia?
Yes.
I see you have your hand raised, um, go ahead.
Hello, good night, you guys, um, I, um, my name's Saskia Van James, and I work at the Massachusetts Recreational Consumer Council. And I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of Sean Moore and the Mass Home Growers. Um, Massachusetts Recreational Consumer Council has been established since twenty seventeen. And we've been really, really passionate and at the forefront of helping to legalize cannabis, and then educate on a local level. What does this mean for towns, and what this means for you guys is this is a real, um, opportunity for you to be able to support local businesses. To exist within your towns, and for that revenue to be generated. I wanted to speak to you guys about some things that's been occurring across the state of Massachusetts, so you're making your determination from a. A very educated standpoint, um, I live in the town of Cambridge, I'm born and raised Massachusetts resident, I have family up and down this. This whole state, so I'm just as passionate all over, which is why I'm here tonight as well, too. Um, and some of the things that I've learnt since entering this industry is the amount of fraud that is occurring. Uh, on a local level, and so what's happening is that many towns are unaware of. Why it's important to prioritize local, and what the outcomes are when you do not do that. Um, and so when you don't do that, and you're saying, hey, we need to go with, who, say you're going with whoever's promising, you know, the, the bottom dollar. Um, they're treating your towns like, um, a, a, a short-term, like, cat cow, like, they're just gonna pay you. And I've literally, it's, I've attended Boston, you know, Nashville conferences, cannabis conferences. Where these same businessmen are on the panels, and they're giving advice to other people entering the industry, telling them, hey. You only have five years where you have to pay these towns, after which, you're not, you don't, you aren't legally required to do anything. So if, this is just a short term, you know, say whatever it's going to take to appease these towns, get in there, and then once you're in. You're not required to do anything to assist these towns, so I'm really passionate about seeing this money really making systemic changes for towns, because. We're seeing local people work at these companies, and I can send you this information. But the senior management of these companies are making millions of dollars while they're hiring people that aren't making a livable wage. And they're making billions of dollars a year, we've made over one billion dollars in cannabis sales, and I'm seeing job postings by these big. Companies, um, and startup companies, they're coming in, they're not local, they're coming in, and they're paying people fifteen dollars an hour. As if this is an Amazon job, and we're, we're treating cannabis like cotton, like, it's really, really disrespectful what's going on in the state. For local residents, so I wanted to make sure you guys are aware that there is predatory behavior going on, and it's really upon you. Uh, to make these, to make these decisions like this, I've lobbied in the city of Cambridge successfully. To get the town of Cambridge to support social equity and to prioritize Cambridge. And so what happened is, they, we were successful in being able to prioritize social equity, they did not realize the importance of putting residents first. And what ended up happening is that we had people coming out of town and saying that they're local, but their money is not local. And so because of that, their money is not local, they're not invested in local, they're not treating the, the business like a local business. Um, so that's, that, that's the second thing I wanna, I'm gonna make you guys aware of, and then the third thing is that, I know you're saying that. You have to go by the scorecard, you know, and you do have to do that, however, you have the power as a town, please, no. You have the power as a town to choose local, you absolutely do have that town, the CCC does not say. Towns don't have the right to do that, the CCC does not say that, and neither does ninety-four G say that. You have the determination to say, hey, we wanna support local, we wanna give local a chance. So when you do that, you give an opportunity for local businesses who are residents, who care to say, hey, these streets have too many potholes. I wanna fill this up with my business, I wanna make sure that this revenue is gonna go assist these things, I wanna see that this money is gonna go and assist public education. I wanna see the money because they care, because they're residents, and they're, they're, you know, involved on a local level. So I wanted to speak to these points, and I, if there are any questions, I do, I am aware of what's going on across the state. And I am here to be support, um, supportive towards you guys, so if you need more information to know, you know, how, um. Other businesses are in other towns, um, if you have a, if you have a license that is in another town. You know, and they're proposing to come here, one of the things we say at MRCC is that there's more than enough to go around for everybody. Well, the, there's only enough to go around for everybody if you guys allow it. If you guys allow ten people to take up licenses across the state, then there's not gonna be enough for everybody. But if you see somebody is coming into your town, and they already have a license in another town, then. Uh, you should be wanting to prioritize your local residents who aren't doing that, and don't have multiple licenses in other towns. Thank you for your time, and I hope you guys make a wise decision tonight.
Thank you, Saskia, we certainly appreciate the work you're doing, uh, clearly you're very passionate about it, very knowledgeable. Uh, we certainly appreciate you coming in, um, Mr. Moore, I see you also with your hand up.
Uh, yes, uh, and. Saskia is right, uh, the decision to be made is up with the board of selectmen. They hold the power to choose who, who they, uh, want, no matter, no matter what in the RFI. RFI says, and, and even states that in RFI, that, that board of selectmen, uh, makes the final decision. It's so. Depending on scoring, uh, it, it's. How can I say, I, you say it's fair, but in all honesty, how, how can you put fairness on something that. That's, uh, being promoted. Uh, from the state, uh, to help people that have, uh, that. Working, that are involved in their communities, and it's to, uh, to help them grow as much as their community grows. There, uh, this process has been going on, uh, with the town for. Quite a few many years, and it's not really about capability, uh, the town already has, uh. Confidence in us, Mass Home Growers, uh, that we are capable of, uh. Doing this, uh, we are following the process just as much as Hi-Hawk has, uh, we are, uh. We have been granted the cultivation in the town, uh, so in order to keep mostly all local. You know, it makes sense to have local, the select board has, has made a precedent, stated that they support. The local residents over outside companies, when they have, uh, refused the liquor license. For honey farms, because it would be in direct competition with local businesses like Marketplace and Main Street Liquors. So, you know, I, I leave it up, um, to you, I've advocated it much, sent many documents that. Uh, support why, uh, we think you should support a locally owned company.
Understood, thank you, um, just to be clear, uh, we started this process a long time ago. Uh, Leah, I know you've been particularly interested in, 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 you know, moving this forward, um, and we've had those conversations. When, when we initially set on our private, or, uh, prior board to, uh, to do this. We removed the board of selectmen per the CCC recommendations, so that this process would not become politicized. What this does is as a level of professionalism to the review team, it allows the professionals to review in their degrees of expertise. Which is what Ron and Ron's team did, you know, first and foremost, um, I know that not all of us are, are in agreement on the. Conceptual nature of this project, however, um, given that we, the town, uh, did vote to move this forward. We have an obligation to do what's best, you know, from a fiduciary standpoint, uh, for the town, and based on the merits of the project. So I know, I, I appreciate you all coming in, um, I know, uh. There has been a motion that was recommended by the town administrator on the agenda, um, if the board has any further discussion. Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to either, um, draft a host agreement, uh, the motion could also be to. Uh, to not enter into a host agreement, or whatever the board so pleases, in, insofar as that motion. Leah, you have your hand up.
Um, I was willing to make the motion if there's not additional conversation, so.
Also have a conversation now for the second motion in two minutes.
So then I would, based on the recommendation of our town administrator and the team that we put together, I think. Mitch, you stated it perfectly, we're not experts in all of this, and we looked towards a team of people who have professional. Expertise in various areas that, um. That we need recommendations on for a project of this nature, and that's what our team, our evaluation team was comprised of, so. Following the recommendation of the town administrator and the review team, um, I would like to make the, the motion that we, the. Select board recommend the town administrator draft a host agreement with Hi-Hawk Farm LLC. with High Hawk Farm LLC as recommended by the evaluation committee. With thanks to both High Hawk Farm and Mass Home Growers for the time and work and effort they've put into to providing us with the information we need.
I have a motion on the table, do I have a second?
A second.
For discussion, uh, just a couple of things. This has been a long drawn out process. We've had some very passionate players involved in this process. Um, I had said this at a prior meeting, but I wanna go on the record and say again. I firmly believe uh back several years ago, question four, the town of Rutland was one of the communities that voted no on the legalization of marijuana by a pretty good margin. Um, this issue should have gone to regular town meeting and not special. Uh, I think that democracy in this case was somewhat undermined by that. Um, I also believe that, you know, we're seeing revenues uh from, for example, Lester, a paper published a couple of weeks ago. From one of these stores, those revenues are going to decrease once this becomes more common throughout the Commonwealth and all these municipalities. So I think the, the short term benefits are gonna be outweighed by the long term impacts. And lastly, actually in agreement with Saskia and her points, you know, in my opinion, the state through the Cannabis Control Commission has implemented policies that excludes, exclude specifically low to moderate income business owners, minority business owners and small locally owned businesses uh with limited resources. Um, you know, the state runs these agreements kind of like mafia operations and I couldn't be more displeased and disappointed uh by the implementation and the rollout of the legalization of this substance, state one. So that being said, does anyone on the board have any further discussion uh regarding this issue? I know we've kind of beat this to death over the last year. Uh, Mr. Nichols, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, just, just a point of clarification. Um, I know Sean had made a comment regarding the um denial of a liquor license. I just wanna clarify that was not due to local competition, that was due to a lack of uh an exception because it didn't demonstrate a need. Um, so that should be clear, although I, I very much support local. Um, but especially if the, if, if two things are at a lea- at equal level, you know, the scoring came out where they were within a certain margin, I certainly would um lean towards local, but I think we need to also look at the scoring. Um, and then, you know, consider all that aspects of it. Thank you.
Mr. How Leah, you have your hand up.
And I just, I fully agree with your points Mitch and understand where you're coming from. Um, I don't think that in the evaluation that we ranked um the fiduciary commitment to the town significantly high in that that would have swayed the um, the evaluation outcome um from our scoring matrix significantly. So um, and looking at how the, the scoring rubric and everything came out, um, there were other areas of, of large difference.
And, and my, my comment was more the statewide nature of how these things are being run. It certainly gives the appearance of a pay to play at the statewide level, so.
Understood.
Ron, uh, well, it's Massachusetts, I mean, you gotta kind of factor that in, I guess, but uh, go ahead, Ron.
Just, just to comment on the revenue side, the, the, in terms of revenue, uh, the way these proposals work is there's a three percent, what they call an impact fee, uh that you get from sales of the, of the product. Uh, that is designed to do things like help add police protection and traffic and all those things that might impact the community as a result of these type establishments. The other three percent is from the state of Massachusetts is a tax uh that the community gets back. So there is no retail, there is no difference in terms of the money of either one of these proposals go. With the exception that I think both proposals, both proposals offered money to give to charity organizations, some extra funds on top of that, but the basic sum of money, there's no big advantage for going one over the other if you were just strictly looking at uh the funding. As, as Leah pointed out, you can see there's the, in the process we use in terms of um looking at the different combinations of different things that happen. Uh, the scoring was about uh all of the different criteria, uh more so than money. Uh, so I think you'll, you'll see, if you look at the chart, you can see in sections what, how the community rated each of the two uh firms by uh the criteria established. So I think you'll see where the, the weighting was and how it played out.
Absolutely. Again, my comment was more general in nature. Um, we had Cannabis Control Commission come on initially when we started this process. Um, and really it's, it's just been more of a frustration on the statewide rollout. So, uh, you know, apologies to both uh companies that were on, uh my comments were not reflective of either of your proposal, but more um how I view the state processes having unfolded for the last several years. All right, uh, anyone else for the board? Um, if not, we'll have a roll call vote, see no further discussion from the board members. Uh, so the motion was made and seconded just because it's been a little while, um as proposed in the agenda to recommend the town administrator draft a host agreement with High Hawk Farm LLC as recommended by the evaluation committee. So we'll have a roll call vote. Stillings?
No.
Clark?
Abstain. Abstain, I mean.
Nichols?
Uh, Nichols, Jay.
Whitman?
Whitman, aye.
New York City, aye. A motion carries, uh, three ayes, one nay, one abstention.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you, uh, your team, Ron, for, for all the hard work.
Thank you all.
So we have uh two items left on the agenda, correspondence, um, and other business. Um, I guess we'll go to correspondence first. I am debating whether or not to introduce this to tonight's meeting. If you look in your packet for tonight, you see an extraordinarily offensive email that the town had received and I normally would not introduce this, but given the climate we're living in, um, I think we should probably address it uh because we all have it. Um, this to me falls so outside of the realm of acceptable public discourse, that's something we usually ignore. Um, but again, uh for full disclosure and to shed the light on the darkness of this issue, um, you know, I think it's, it's upon us as a board, what I would like us to do is publicly rebuke, the board's okay with it. The sentiments expressed herein and what we received. And uh basically for anyone watching at home wondering what this is, I don't wanna dignify it by putting it on the screen. Uh, it is disgusting and it is uh hateful towards homosexuals and non-Christians and certain sects of Christianity. And that really has no place in this meeting, uh, and I wanna make that very clear. So what I would like to do is entertain a motion uh to review the contents of this email that came into the select board uh and all its contents therein.
So, so moved?
Second.
Thank you. Have a roll call vote, there's no further discussion. Seeing none. Clark?
Aye.
Whitman?
Whitman, aye.
Billings?
Billings, aye.
Nichols?
Nichols, aye.
City, I motion carries unanimous.
Mr.
Uh, the, the last item, uh, is other business, I think there was an email that Aaron had sent out. Uh, there's one other thing that was, that came in last minute that we really have to talk about. Uh, probably plan to talk about a little bit moving forward. Uh, the state had notified the town late last week that we have to uh notify a butters of the six tip project. Um, that project goes back five or six years and uh there's been a lot of turnover. Um, this is something that started under Margaret and we've had two town administrators since Margaret. Um, something that started under Gary and now Joe is here uh with the town and we've had many changes and turnover on the board. So I've heard from some uh folks in town that are a little bit concerned and confused about the project. Um, there is some general level of confusion as to uh what the project is, how much it's going to cost. Uh, the plans have changed substantially is my understanding since the inception of this four or five years ago. Uh, and it's really something that because there is a public hearing that is being announced for the twenty-sixth, um, which again, the state really hit a home run on this by having the public hearing being pre-recorded uh with no chance really for interaction from the public. It's one of those things that, that really rubs people the right way. Um, so I think what we, we should do, if the board is amenable to it, I don't wanna put Buckley on the spot tonight, uh but maybe schedule a meeting prior to that hearing. Uh, or even Ron, uh, if you wanna recommend a hearing of our own, um, we can address some of those public questions and concerns and make sure all the board members and town officials are on the same page about what this project is, what the impacts are going to be to the community, what the road closures are going to look like moving forward, things of that nature.
So, Mr. Chairman, just in, again, I wasn't here for when this project started. So I would ask Joe, if we were to do a public hearing, yeah, the board selectmen have its own public hearing, would we be in a good position to be able to answer, since this is a state project, a lot of the residents' questions? Or would they, residents really need to talk to the state and get their questions addressed through the state in the form of email or writing? How, would, if this, if this can be a public, you know, a selectmen kind of hearing, I'm all for it. I just, I don't know enough about the project to determine if you could, you and the, you know, because it would really come up to you. Would you answer all the questions about this project or at least enough to uh try to uh have residents understand the project?
Do, do you mind if I ad- address the group entire?
Uh, Mr. Buckley, go ahead. You have free rein of the floor.
I'm sorry?
The free rein of the floor.
Oh, well, thank you. Courtesy is important. Um, so it's a tip project. Um, I'm, I'm not gonna get too much into the project and what that means is transportation improvement. Uh, and it's federal funding that comes out through a state agency. Um, I believe, I, I did contact Mass Highway today before I came to the meeting. They uh are hoping to get it on around eight o'clock or nine o'clock the morning of the day they posted on the announcement. Um, and procedures on how the public can comment will be um explained at that time. Um, basically they're taking comments by email. Um, as to whether I wanna cover all the details associated with the project entire, if you wanna have a presentation, what I'd probably advise doing is um bringing the town's consultant engineer and C H A for this project. Uh, we paid them to do the design, so I, I think they're the best folks to come in and probably present to this group or the public in general. Um, what I, I mean, it hasn't changed all that much from its original inception. It just got bounced around with some technical challenges and some scheduling challenges over time, but for the most part, it's what it was originally laid out to be.
What was the, what's the town's, I mean, these are two separate projects, right? Because it's my understanding there needs to be work done over by the, to create a dam prior to the tip project being implemented, is that correct?
The dam and molten mill, just to clarify first, the, the roadwork is intended to go from Maine at Palmagussit to uh, and it terminates up by the subdivisions that uh burn through all east and west. Um, and it goes over a culvert that comes out of Molten Mill Pond. Um, a portion of the dam and the culvert structure, which date back to the late eighteen hundreds, is in very poor shape. It has to be replaced as part of the roadway work. What's challenging is though that both the federal government and the state government have um formulas or rules for what you can fund with tip money and what you can't. And the dam work cannot be funded via tip money. Um, we were able to put some chapter ninety money towards that to get the project back on track. I wouldn't say it's a separate project, but it's possible because we're now at six plus million dollars. The folks managing the tip money may phase it and do both the dam, do the dam as one phase and the road as a separate phase. I hope that answers your question.
How much is the town contributing to the dam work that can't be covered by the tip?
Probably a half a million. And that's an approximate number. I don't have an exact number for you, I'm sorry.
Okay. And is that, I guess, is that all chapter ninety? Where is that funding coming from?
That all came out of chapter ninety money and it's already been committed through the chapter ninety process. Probably a year and a half ago now. We've got pretty good doc- documentation on that. I could probably get that back to you if you need it, but it was done before this current select board.
Understood. I just think, you know, if it's okay with you, Joe, I think the public would probably appreciate um some information because it has been a lengthy, but you know, I, I think Mr. Becker was on the board when this was kind of first thrown around. Um, and I certainly, because of the way that the process moves, um, even this last board, I don't know about anybody else, Leah or Jeff, um, I know that I've been on the board now for almost a year and a half and there's been very little um movement in terms of what's been presented. Um, so it would be good just to get everyone on the same page if, if you're agreeable to that.
No, I, I have no problem at all. I can, and, and I, I, you agree, it'd be worth it to get someone from C H A involved as well. They could probably, some conceptual drawings to put out, you know, so that folks can follow things.
So if, if, Mr. Chairman, if, if that's okay, uh, Joe, let's time, you know, let's say two weeks prior to the state public hearing, uh, what, what's the date on that? The twenty-sixth of, of January?
Two weeks is tomorrow.
So what's that?
Two weeks is tomorrow.
So I guess then, if we're gonna time this, you, what do you wanna have it, a week before the state hearing? If we could try to get C H A to, is it C H A, the company to come in and do something with us? And we work out a schedule to see when they could come in and we could plan something. And again, it's gonna be by Zoom. Mr. Chairman, so I don't know how many people would attend such a meeting, but I would have to post it and see if people show up. Um, the, the, just this COVID stuff makes it very difficult to get the kind of attendance with love from citizens, you know?
I think, I mean, the public hearing itself doesn't really, you know, it's a necessity, but drag on around, it doesn't trigger anything, so I think we could probably hold off until our next regular meeting of the twenty-fifth. Um, unless you think anything's time sensitive. Uh, Leah, go ahead.
I was, thanks Mitch. I was just wondering if um it would be possible to have some documentation, kind of an overview of the project put on the website? Um, and people that are really interested can be directed there ahead of time. Um, because I'm similar to you Mitch, it's been kind of talked about conceptually at like a very high level since I've been on the board, but the details have just kind of been, you know, oh, now there's a dam we have to deal with, now there might be this issue or whatever. And it hasn't been a whole kind of overview. Um, and now that we're looking like it's actually gonna happen, I think that that would be beneficial. And if we have it somewhere that people that are interested could be directed and then we talk about it at our next scheduled board meeting and then have the public hearing pre-recorded mass dot, then that might help.
Yeah, and I think to Leah's point too, I mean, we took a look at the state, the tip project website today, which gives a tentative schedule. I mean, it's coming up pretty quick and for a mile worth of construction, I mean, it's, it's, it's a sizable project in terms of all, the federal and state amount, I think was somewhere in the six and a half million dollar range. I know that we have chapter ninety money set aside and I believe there was some um controversy around what needed to be done over by that culvert. Um, when I, I think if I'm not wrong, the, we initially had a commission or a, a subcommittee. Um, and Peter might know this, that, that actually took a look at all of this when they were putting all this stuff together. Um, and again, this is something that predates our board and I think we really just need to be all on the same page. We've had a lot of turnover. Um, Mr. Buckley inherited this, uh Ron inherited this, and I think it's just beneficial for everybody if we kind of know what's going on with the project of that size. Uh, Ron, go ahead.
So, Mr. Chairman, you wanna just have it that way, so we'll use the next Board of Selectmen's meeting instead of we'll have any agenda, a little hearing and we'll bring in the engineer to answer any questions. Is, is that? Okay, hearing, is that okay? Just to use the select board for that purpose?
Yeah, I think, um, if the board's amenable to it, I think that that.
What I can tell you just briefly on the dam, and I'll be very brief, um, cause I was involved when I first got here, probably a month after I got here.
Oh, yeah.
The town was actively going after funding. Uh, we really were, we were trying to get a grant to cover the dam work, anything we could to get, cover the dam work because it just didn't fall in the tip funding. Um, and if we didn't come up, if, by means of example, if we didn't manipulate the chapter ninety money to get the dam work done, the project would be stalled for years now. So that's the motivation behind that. I, I hope you can follow what I'm suggesting.
Understood. Ron?
Ju- ju- just so people understand here, right? This transportation improvement funding is, 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 as Joe said, is federal money that comes through the state. But to get that money, you have to apply with C M R P C and go through a very, very long process to get this. Um, literally, most people that get on that list, it takes years before the project are actually approved. Without that, the, the project will never occur because as you, as you say, Mr. Chairman, amounts are just astronomical in terms of the cost, so. Uh, you know, they, I think the total town share is usually around twenty percent of the total cost of the project. Um, but, you know, there, there may be some issues with this project. I just said though that I think there's a lot of time in play invested in this by a lot of people in this place, so I think we need to keep people informed, but this project does need to continue to move forward.
Understood. And again, the only intent is really just getting that information out there to the public. Um, there's gonna be, there's probably been turnover and a butters over there as well, so I think it's just been a good for everybody, so.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I apparently can't run, raise my hand as the uh, as the operator of the meeting, but I have a couple of questions if I may.
Feel free to raise your voice. Feel free to raise your voice instead.
Uh, I'm confused, uh, who's actually going to be in charge of the project? Will be the town or will it be the state? Or both somehow?
I'm sorry, Joe, you said the state?
Yep. Mass Highway will be bidding and running that job. They'll be, uh, Mass Highway inspectors on there will have a liaison, but it's not in our control, no.
Okay, thank you. Um, about the hearing that's happening on the twenty-sixth, it's not clear to me that anybody gets to actually participate in it. Because it says that it's going to be posted. It doesn't say it's going to be held and available for, for public use. So I'm not sure that makes it a public hearing, but um, am I understanding that correctly?
No, that is what the, whatever gets sent out indicates a public hearing. And to Joe's point, um, they did leave an email address. If, if you had comments that may or may not be addressed during the hearing, it's going to be pre-recorded. So that's, that's, I think, how they're going to handle the hearing process.
This is Mass, the Mass Department of Transportation, simply trying to follow their process remotely.
Right.
Okay, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Uh, Leah, go ahead.
Question about that. You just, I, I was, I don't understand. Um, the pre-recording will, they will solicit questions in advance of the pre-recording that they'll address in the pre-recording? Or they will address any questions that arise from the pre-recording at a subsequent date somehow through communication or something?
My understanding, and they haven't been very good with posting the dates yet. Um, the date is set. Uh, it is noted that the hearings will be pre-recorded, but usually it occurs is they'll field all the questions and pre-record it either a day or two before with the questions that have been fielded. And those they feel like need to be addressed, need to be addressed. I mean, at the end of the day, it's a hearing and I don't, I'm not sure if they have any obligation to actually address any questions. But uh, there is the option to participate that way. I just feel like a lot of folks are going to feel that they don't, they're not able to have their voice heard. I mean, usually when we do these things, they're in person and we do, we have had, you know, robust um participation on some of these hearings when it comes to uh, Mr. Buckley, uh, a lot of the projects that you've been involved in in town. Um, this is obviously an entirely different year and a different climate. Um, but I'm just anticipating based on what I've been hearing so far um in the community that there, there are some concerns, people have questions, there's confusion over the dollar amounts over, you know, how potential road closures could impact businesses, things like that, and emergency services. That's something else I think that we need to look at as well, but.
So, if I may continue to, with you Mitch, I'm, and this is just me kind of thinking out loud a little bit, but I wonder if it would make more sense than to try to have um an overview meeting before our BOS meeting, so that the information can get out there to anyone who's interested. Um, in addition to being posted online, so that people feel like they could potentially submit questions with an educate, educated background um process as far as where the project is currently and that rather than, to me all kind of, um, I just wonder if we would hit more, potentially hit more people that may have questions that would submit if they had more information.
I, I'm for that. I'm all for that. I obviously don't want to create work for Mr. Buckley or, or Ron and his team. So it really just depends on their comfort level if we want to do something next week to have that overview of, that the public can, can watch and attend and then post it on YouTube. Uh, but it's really up to, to our staff if that's something that they think that they have adequate time for.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would, I would say uh that Joe can reach out to the consulting company, engineering company. We could talk to them. And if, if it seems to make sense to do it earlier, we'll try to do it earlier. If not, worst case scenario is we do it at the select board meeting. The, the one thing I do like about the select board meeting is you're more likely to get more attendance at a select board meeting than you would it just, you know, we just post something somewhere, you know what I mean? So, uh, yeah, it, it's, you know, good and bad, I guess, is the answer.
Leah?
Yeah. My, I was just going to say, my only concern with that is if the meeting is scheduled to be posted on the twenty-sixth and our meeting's the twenty-fifth, then any questions that would arise from our meeting and the overview wouldn't be addressed, because I'm assuming it's pre-recorded, probably the Friday or the Monday, and questions would be kind of a moot point at that point. That's my only concern, just the timing of it.
We'll see what we can do, Leah. We'll, we'll talk about, we'll talk with the engineer. We can do it a little earlier than we can do it. And obviously we'll invite all the selectmen to that meeting as well, but we'll have to do the normal public posting of the meeting. You know, somehow try to get it out to, to the public. Ask that. Now, they did get, I think they got, there's a butters, a butters notice uh over the weekend and I, I don't know if that, a butters notice talked about the twenty-sixth meeting, Mitch. I didn't read it. Um, but, you know, the, the part of the requirement for the state is to notify the butters of what's going on. So they should be aware of that.
And like I said, just if we can even get something on the town website with a, a project overview um that people can, that are interested can look there also. I'm just trying to think of ways, again.
Well, the other thing is that I'm sitting here, listening to all this and, and I'm kind of new to it myself. We'll try and put something together that speaks to the Commonwealth and slash um federal government's process on this, so that you can understand what the hearing means actually. Uh, I, my understanding was it was just to basically to explain the project entire um and connect some of the dots, because it's moving. It is going on.
Mr. Chair, I have a couple more questions if I may.
Sure, Mr. Crane, go ahead.
Do we have any idea when the project, the work would likely begin?
Uh, it's slated, and Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, but the project is slated to be implemented uh in uh twenty-two, uh, which would mean, I would imagine that the dam work would have to be done at some point during a construction season this year. Is that the plan?
That's a means and method, methods question. I, we're not there yet. There is a schedule. I mean, it's a big schedule. Um, and I, I'm not entirely convinced professionally that they could get all the work done in a year anyways. It's probably going to go over a year.
Okay. Uh, Peter, did you have another question?
I had one other question. Uh, an introduction to this, to the dam side of the project was given the conservation commission some time ago, I believe by CHA, but my memory could be faulty about that. It turned out, the, the, the proposal turned out to be more controversial than I expected uh with, with the commission itself. Can I expect there to be a uh, a, a notice of intent and all the appropriate wetlands uh process for this as well?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
But, you know, there is one thing I want to speak to about the dam and the culvert. Um, they're very much undersized. They're in poor condition. Uh, Office of Dam Safety has called out the dam. This work would have to get done regardless of the roadwork. So I, I wouldn't put it off. That's all I would say.
No, I, and, and I don't disagree with you. Uh, there was, if I recall correctly, a, a planned raising of the crossing over uh, over the dam and I believe therefore over the, the um the rail trail in order to uh accommodate some of the changes that are necessary to the dam. So we, that's a detailed thing that I, that I don't think we'll have yet.
Because we don't, I don't want to carry this too far because we don't have an official agenda item on. Um, really, the, the last minute nature of this was because of the response I've received from those letters going out. Um, Peter, I think these are probably good issues to raise when we have that higher level meeting. Um, I have some questions of my own, but I don't want to discuss them now, because I don't want Mr. Buckley to feel like he's sprung it on him too. Because I don't, I want the public to be able to look at the agenda and be aware that there's actual conversation going on. So I, I think we, we need to hold those off maybe and just stick to what we want to do in terms of procedure um, how to move forward. So Leah, I think, uh, made a great uh suggestion that we try to hold this on the earlier side if we can. Ron and Joe, if you could take a look at that. If we have to push it off, we can, but to Leah's point that public, a means of submitting their questions prior to the deadline for uh the posted hearings. Um, and I think that's probably how we should best move forward. And, and Ron, if you just want to circle back um with us on that, we can get something out of the books when you're ready.
Mr. San Anto, are you still there?
Yeah.
Um, I think as I start to get information available and we can, we could probably put like a, a place marker on the town website and start attaching data over time, so people can start working through it.
That sounds good. We'll discuss somewhere tomorrow, Joe. We'll, we'll look at all the options and, and figure out where we go from here, but I think the board has made some good points and we'll see what we can do to, I mean, I think, I think the overall thing is let's try to get this more out to the public so they can ask questions and, and get answers. I think that's what's really important here, so.
Right, and I, I can't understate that, the fact that it's moving is a good thing. I, 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 I think it's been pushed off and, and, and kind of backburnered for too long. So I think it's prudent that, I, I think it's good that it's moving.
Thank you all for all the work you've been doing on it. I know it's been kind of haunting us for quite a while, so I appreciate it. And hopefully this final push makes it worth it.
Okay. Um, if there's nothing else from the board, uh, the last item uh is a German, however.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep, go ahead, Ron.
Uh, there's just still a letter correspondence from Timika Murphy uh regarding the conservation commission and a potential appointment by the board selectmen or one of their members to serve on the open space committee.
Apologies, um, I did see that uh added. Um, so under correspondence in your folder, uh, we do have a conservation has formed an open space subcommittee. Uh, they are asking for a member of our board to, to serve in that capacity. Uh, so I'm uh willing to entertain a motion from any member of the board that would like to serve in that capacity. Or uh if Mr. Crane has a recommendation uh as to which one of us are his favorites, uh, we can certainly um entertain that as well.
Uh, Mr. Chair, like my children, I have no favorites.
All right. Well, I mean, uh, yeah, I think honestly with the work Leah is doing, um, I would nominate her, but I also feel like we've been asking a lot of Leah um on some of these things related to open space and, you know, the uh, the group looking at Uptown. Uh, so uh, anyone else would like to, to volunteer, they can, but Leah, um, I would certainly make a motion to nominate you. I respect the work you're doing in this field. But if you can't handle it, then be brutally honest and we can, we can work with some, work together with you on it.
I'm honored that you would nominate me and I'd be honored to do it. Um, and just know, you know, again, similar to the, the master plan steering committee and everything, I'd try to keep communication with the board as open as possible. Um, and, you know, provide you the information that you need um, and that we can keep an open conversation throughout our board meetings and everything also, so.
Anybody else on the board have any uh further comments? I just think, Leah, with the work you're already doing, it ties in very nicely in terms of conceptually. Not to throw more on your plate.
I know, it's nice to have the cohesiveness of it, so I appreciate that.
Okay.
I gave you motion, Mitch.
All right, motion is second. Any further discussion from the board? Um, if not, we'll have a roll call vote. Clark?
Clark, aye.
Whitman?
Whitman, aye.
Billings?
Billings, aye.
Nichols?
Nichols, aye.
The city, aye. Uh, motion carries unanimous. Um, I guess lastly, uh, going back to the marijuana item, uh, I did want to express that Lyndon had reached out to me personally. He looks forward to the ribbon cutting and sampling some of the products once they become available. Um, and on that note, uh, the only item left is a German. I'll entertain a motion to, for the board. All right, a motion, do I have a second?
Whitman, second.
Second.
All right. Um, any further discussion? Hearing done. We'll have a roll call vote. Clark?
Clark, aye.
Whitman?
Whitman, aye. Thanks all.
Billings?
Billings, aye.
Nichols?
Nichols, aye.
The city, aye. Motion carries unanimous. Everyone, have a good week.